I'd like to call the meeting into order, please. If you'll stand for a moment of silence and the pleasurable allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Jamie Giardi.
Here.
Mr. Derek Montlick.
Here.
Mr. John Moody.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole.
Here.
Mr. Richard Tinnello.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. And proof of publication.
The items are advertised, well, the item was advertised and can be taken on April 3rd, 2024, or and by affidavit asserted by management.
All right, thank you very much. So I think we have minutes to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from the March 7th meeting.
Second.
Put a motion in the second for other discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'd like to welcome everyone today. We're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the County Commissioners and we meet twice a month. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings, transmit to the Board of County Commissioners our recommendations on the comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who's in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the County Commissioners, that it'd be important for you to attend the appropriate County Commission meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the format of the meetings, we have three sections. We have continuances. We have consent agenda and we have regular items. Continuances are items that are where we see the application and either the staff or the applicant request a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our custom to grant continuances unless they're out of the area or some extraordinary circumstance. And then we have consent agenda. That's items that are on our agenda and we have not had any objections or any notices from the public that they want to have it discussed, so we're gonna go through, we don't, I don't think we, I think we have one item on the agenda today, which is very unusual. But typically, we'd go through every consent item and anybody that wanted to have it pulled for discussion, raise your hand when we read it off and we would do that. Then the regular items. And those are the items that are be fully discussed today at this meeting. So applicants typically will have three minutes to make a presentation. The respondents will have three minutes to state their questions or concerns. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and and try to respond to those concerns. The if I can turn the page here. Typically, if there's been a request in writing, at least 24 hours ahead of this meeting for additional time, depending on the situation, that normally it's granted. This is an opportunity to silence your phones. If you have a phone with you, please put it on the silent position so you don't interrupt anybody when they come up to speak. And before we start the meeting, we have the we have an opportunity for anybody who's here to speak about something that's not on today's agenda to come up and speak. And we can make note of those things and put them on the record. So is there anybody here to speak on something that's not on today's agenda?
Mr. Chair, we do have Alicia Schramm here to speak on something that is not on today's agenda.
Okay, if you want to come forward, give us your name and address, Ms. Schramm, and state your case. Yeah, we'll get them all sworn. Okay, before you start, Ms. Schramm, we're gonna just swear everybody in that may come and speak today, so if you think you might want to give up and get up and give testimony today, if you'll raise your stand and raise your right hand and be sworn, please.
Do you swear or are you on the testimony or about to get it to choose and help you down?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Alicia Schramm. I live Dewey, you want my whole address?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, 4353 Dewey Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34652.
Thank you.
So I've come before your committee with two items. I'm gonna try to get it done in three minutes. And it is about code violations. So in 1982, Pasco County joined FEMA. And FEMA had flood regulations for any flood zoning in the county. And Pasco County follows those codes. Those codes in some of our neighborhood, when people did requested from the building department permits for codes, they were often not closed codes. We have multiple now. And the realtors have not been disclosing the codes either and aren't required by hard, fast law for disclosure. And so I bought a home recently in Pasco County, didn't know about the code violation, and I bought the house two years ago. And so when I went to sell the house, is when I discovered that we had a code violation from the appraiser from the bank. And so I can't even sell the house right now because of the disclosure, the lack of disclosure. So I am in a lawsuit involving all three realtors, the owners, as well as two real estate agencies. We have multiple codes in the county. So what I've done is I've looked at real estate in Pasco County. And what they did in 1982, when they joined FEMA, when Pasco County joined FEMA, so it would help with some of the insurance cost, et cetera, and you know, insurance companies are leaving the state of Florida for this very reason, is that they grandfathered in homes only from 1982 and back. Anything from 82 forward that was built, and my home was built in 2002. It was remodeled in 2007, 2008. And your building inspector came to my home because I called him because the house was up for sale and then I took it off the market immediately when I found out about the code violation from my realtor. And I had bought this home from the same realtor who was selling it. She never disclosed that code and neither did the owners. So what I'm wondering about is when are we going to be, or what is the Pasco County's building inspector's responsibility for getting these codes closed? So if you open a permit, let's say for a shed, okay? And you want a shed and you're in the flood zone, they're not gonna allow you to have a shed. So not only does the owner have to go back and close that permit, but the county doesn't do anything about it. Now, I'm not criticizing the county, okay? But I think that the appraisers office and the building code inspection offices need to help us out with that. They're not fining the owners, otherwise I probably would have known about this. And we have a lot of open code violations in this county, okay? And it's a simple computer program, probably already available to the appraisers office, that all the codes would be either closed and that we would have to grandfather in those homes. For the last 20 years, my home is 2002. You know, it's now 2024. So 20-some years ago, this permit has been open this long. And no one, including our wonderful Pasco County offices, and I can't say enough about how well you guys do your work. When I came to this county, it was amazing that I came here for my driver's license. It's a well-oiled machine. I can't say enough about how well you do such a great job. I know you listen to a lot of complaints. But this is a pretty serious one because this is a very serious lawsuit. It's the only way. So I have 1,700 square feet of livable, or what you call heated space. The house was advertised as 3,014 square feet with one extra bedroom and one bath. It is all illegal. Had the county done something to close the code after, let's say, a year or two years even? You know, when you're building a new home? That code should be, when you're remodeling a home, it's not gonna take you more than a year or two to remodel that home. It's not gonna take you more than a few years. And we know that it takes a long time to build a house, you know? Because I know I lived close to Starkey Ranch when I first came. I have friends that are waiting four years for a home. But this is, these are codes. So when I went to some of the realtors and looked at some of the homes that they had in my neighborhood, in the woodlands, they were not disclosing these open code violations. I came down to the county building, looked up the codes for these houses, and they're all illegal. So I feel like we either get grandfathered in, you know, that we can amend, you know, our regulations. And at least anything that's older than 20 years, or 10 years, or even five, that we get grandfathered in as well. Because we have a lot of people coming to the state of Florida right now that are gonna be buying these illegal homes with no knowledge. I was a nurse practitioner. How would I know anything about open code violations? I have learned so much with this lawsuit. And I do need, you know, to address this so that this doesn't happen to somebody with their life savings. Your home is one of your biggest investments in your life. I'm going through a lot of stress right now. And I don't think it's called for. I think that we could have avoided this by approaching it from a county and a state regulatory. And that we get those codes closed or that we grandfather these homes in that are already there. My house is not even insurable with open codes. So if we get into a hurricane and my house blows down, I lose my entire investment.
So let me understand. Do you have a home that was built up and then they finished off the bottom?
They did, sir.
After the
After FEMA, after we joined FEMA in 1982. In 2002, the house was built and in 2007, they remodeled this downstairs completely. And that open code has been open since 2007.
Yeah, and those downstairs units, probably a lot of people don't know, maybe they do know, but they're not insurable. So, I mean, that should give people a big clue right off the bat that they're
And so the realtors, you know, are selling these homes. There is a state law that you have to disclose any open code violation. And that's not being taken into consideration when they're selling the homes. Remember, we were in a big glut of selling homes in Florida two years ago, or three years ago, before the interest rates went up. And so because you grandfathered the homes that were built before FEMA, then what are we gonna do with the last, since 1982 to present, when these codes aren't even closed by the county? And the county has a lot open right now. Not just in my neighborhood, but in every neighborhood that they've done this type of remodel that's in a flood zone.
So in this case, there was never a permit pulled, right? It was just
Permit was pulled.
Oh, so they did pull a permit, but they never
And it's been open since 2007 by our building department.
I'm surprised they pulled a permit to finish out the downstairs, which is not allowed on a built-up home.
Exactly. Or that if you're going to remodel, that you remodel with the standards that the county has established, that they shouldn't have, you know, that if you're going to open a code with planning, okay, and a permit from the county, and they look at that and say, no, you can't have this, then the county closes that code immediately because they don't approve of any of the flood zone disregards in the planning or the architect or
Well, it should have never been pulled. The permit should have never even been issued in the first place.
It was, and it was.
If that was the case.
And it's still open.
Yeah.
You know, since 2007.
Well, I regret you having that trouble. I know, it's a big concern, I'm sure it is. And unfortunately, this board has no control over that. We don't have, it's not something that we regulate. But maybe somebody in the county, is there somebody in the county that can give her some advice on who to go see?
I'm going to provide Ms. Schramm with the information for Building Construction Services so she can reach out to Building Construction Services and see if that can be handled through there.
They are the people that, Chris came, I don't remember Chris's last name. He's one of the chief inspectors for the county. He came in five minutes to my home. That's why I'm saying this county is doing its job. He came and said this entire downstairs is illegal. And the permit was open and never closed by the county. So it's been bought and sold three times since then without anyone noticing this code violation until my realtor discovered it from an appraiser that somebody had made the offer on the house when I was when I was selling it.
So did this Chris, did he offer you any suggestions?
So they're also being subpoenaed, you know, from that level for the information. Chris pretty much made my case for me. Because like you said, the code A should have never been open with the remodel and their plans. And so they put a bedroom and a bathroom, they changed the footprint of the and again, when you do anything like that, if you change the footprint of the house, if you change the if you put a plumbing, electricity, AC in, you must have a permit. The county closed some of those permits. They closed the AC permit. But they didn't close the building permit. They shouldn't have even had AC down there, the type of AC that is in there.
It just means the person who pulled the permit didn't get the final on it. They didn't get the final inspection done to close the permit, so.
In 2012, the county destroyed all of the records and went to computer. There are no paper records on my home. So again, you know, I'm not suing the county, obviously. But again, we, you know, because you're all protected a certain amount, but it could be included in the lawsuit. And I don't want to be part of a problem. I want to be part of the solution that we can avoid this. And I think the only way we're going to avoid this is to approach it from the County Commissioners' office and have them work with us. Who's in charge of, you know, does the county commissioner, who approved us to go into FEMA? Is it the commissioners that joined, that recommended that we join FEMA so that we could lower the insurance cost? But I mean, when we're talking about county, aren't you all the rulers of the county?
So to be clear, this is the Planning Commission?
Yes.
This is not the Board of County Commissioners? So I think a lot of what your comments are directed, probably should be directed to the Board of County Commissioners because that is the board that regulates the departments that you're talking about. Whether it's the Building Department or Code Enforcement. This particular group actually has no authority over the Building Department or the Code Enforcement Department or even the decision about whether we're part of FEMA or not.
I see. What about code enforcement?
This board does not do code enforcement either.
It's not you guys.
This board makes, as Mr. Gray started the meeting, what their duties are. They generally make recommendations on new land use proposals. So somebody wants to rezone their property or change the comprehensive plan or seek, they make decisions on variances and special exceptions and those types of matters, but not the matters that you're speaking about.
And then one other issue is, and I did talk to Patty about this for this meeting, is that code enforcement for signage? Do you do code enforcement for signage?
We don't do code enforcement at all.
Yeah, they do, occasionally, somebody will come and ask for a deviation from the code, which this body would hear.
Sure.
That's a case-by-case basis. But if you're talking about enforcement of the existing code, this board has no authority to do that.
So who would I go to for that?
There's, we have a county code enforcement department.
Okay, super.
And they report to this is our Assistant County Administrator for Development Services, the County Administrator, and ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you for your help.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck.
We're sorry you're having the trouble.
It's okay. No, I want to, I want to make a difference in this county.
The one thing of advice I'd give to you, though, is when you explain this to the Board of County Commissioners, you probably need to be clear when you're saying code because that's a little bit confusing when you make that statement. There's a difference between a code enforcement action or code enforcement complaint and a building permit. And you're kind of lumping them together.
No, too
So it's kind of hard to understand which you're, when you say open, something's open, I'm not sure whether you're talking about the building permit being open.
The building permit is still open.
Or there's an active code enforcement action that's open.
There's no code action, there's no action on the code violation right now.
Okay, but when you, typically, when you say code, people think code enforcement. So you might want to
Well, it was never enforced.
You might want to revisit your terminology when you're explaining.
It sounded like you were saying there's an open permit, not an open code. And then maybe there was a code violation because of the illegal structure.
There was an open permit and the permit is still open.
So you may have two open cases. You may have an open code violation as well as an open permit that was never closed before.
I think, it sounds like, I agree with you. It sounds like you're saying that the building permit's still open. I think it's better for you to describe that as an open building permit as opposed to open code.
What it is, is a building permit that was never closed because I think the building permit comes with conditions that expires if you don't call for the inspections within a certain amount of time.
And this has never expired either. It's still open.
Well, it had to. It normally expires in six months.
Well, it's nothing, unfortunately, it's nothing that we can
Right, well, let's not waste your time.
You know, officially advise you on, so I don't want to give you the wrong advice.
Nope.
David is the county attorney, so he can
Wonderful.
Yeah, but I would urge her to talk to our Building Department.
I will.
And if you're not, I mean, ultimately, you could address the Board of County Commissioners because they do have authority over the issues that you're talking about.
Right, well, the Building Department is the one that helped me, you know, with the case. And they're helping me with the case, you know, in, you know, in suing the owners and the realtors, unfortunately.
But I would go to the, as David said, I would go to the County Commissioners and state your case. They're the ones that make the decision.
And we appreciate you bringing up the larger issue, too.
So sorry.
No, don't be sorry, it's fine.
But I appreciate your help.
And if I may, for Ms. Schramm and for the Planning Commission, Cassandra Sebastian, who is Commissioner Starkey's legislative aide, is going to assist you as you come out of the room.
Super, thank you.
And this is the information for Mr. Murphy with the Building Construction Services. But it sounds like you have spoken to them already.
I have, and they came right away. They were just there. Like I said, this county is doing a great job.
Oh, good. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Your three minutes is up, by the way. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. The one and only item on today's agenda is PEG 247768. It's a special exception in the name of John Azuki. It's for a special exception for duplexes in an R4 high-density residential district. The applicant has requested a continuance to the June 20th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. We do have several residents signed up to speak. So I'm not sure if the Planning, if the Planning Commission is inclined to to grant that continuance, a request from the applicant for continuance, then perhaps we can provide the rules for those who may not be able to speak on June 20th because perhaps there are other engagements that they may have, so.
Okay, very good.
So generally, anybody that wants to speak today, you can, if you can't make your, what is the date again?
June 20th, 2024, 1:30 in Newport Ritchie, here in this room.
You could speak today, but you will not be able to speak again when this comes back on the June 20th. In other words, you don't get two bites of the apple, so. But we understand that some people, some of you may not be able to show up on June 20th. And if this is your only chance to speak, then you can get up and speak to the item.
So just as a show of hands, how many people think they might want to speak today? So, three people, four hands, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, for the applicant. I requested the continuance and I did so because I could see that we have interest in what we're doing. And I'm sure a lot of people just, they may have concerns, but they might also just want to know what we're doing. So I recommended that my client have a neighborhood meeting. I'm hoping that a lot of the people have signed up so I can reach out to them. But that is what my intentions are. I wanted to say that to you all. That's my recommendation, and that's why we've continued it out 60 days. We're not just asking for 30 days so that we can reach out to the neighborhood and talk with them. So I wanted to let you know that and put that on So I wanted to let you know that and put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Barbara, is it safe for me to assume that even though we have a few people speaking today, that you're going to hold back rebuttal until June?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. For those of you who do want to speak today, do you want to hear the presentation from the county first? Do we need to move to continue it?
Yes.
Yes.
It's really up to you all if you want to move to continue it now or wait till the folks speak. I mean, it's possible somebody could say something that might influence the date of which you continue it to, so I don't, you may want to wait.
So a show of hands, who who would like to hear the presentation from the county? Show of hands? Okay. All right, is that, is Liam going to do that?
He is. He's just escorting Ms. Schram to speak to the legislative aide.
Okay.
So he'll be right back.
While we're waiting on Liam, some of you that raised your hands, I know that you did not get up to be sworn, so could we go ahead and swear? Anybody that wants to speak today needs to stand up and be sworn in by the clerks. So if you intend to speak today, please stand up, raise your right hand so you can be sworn in.
Do you swear our firm's 10:20 or about to give the truth?
Okay, you're welcome to come up front here and sit so you're handy, once it's not your turn to speak. We're just waiting for our presenter to come in and and give you the details of the application. Have a seat.
He probably didn't realize he had to.
It's okay, I could start it.
You can start, yeah.
Absolutely. Again, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Today, we're going over item PC2, which is PEG 247768, which is a special exception request by John Azuki for duplexes in an R4 high-density residential district. So the future land use classification is RES6, residential six dwelling units per acre. The applicants are proposing to develop the property with seven duplexes, so there'll be a total of 14 units, single-family detached. And it's in conformance with the R4 high-density residential district, which states that special exceptions, that duplex units are special exceptions in the R4 high-density residential district. It's located on the south side of Smokey Drive, approximately 125 feet west of Blue Pine Circle. This is the site location, which is, shows the site within the central market area. It is outside of the urban service or concentration areas, and they're not, and it's not in the rural area. This is the outline showing the entire parcel. It just shows that the parcel is generally within the Sugar Creek DRI, former DRI, because it was just a fairly recently rescinded area. It is surrounded by several different neighborhoods, which include Shadow Run Village. It shows the location of Sugar Creek Boulevard in proximity and State Road 52, and as well as a subdivision by the name of Woodland Village at Shadow Run. This is showing you the context map, so the area within 1,000 feet of the proposed use. This is the aerial map showing that the access is through Smokey. Future land use, which is RES6, six dwelling units per gross acre, the potential for that, and the existing zoning, which is R4, and it's surrounded by PUD, a planned unit development district. It's approximately 7.06 acres. It's undeveloped. Access to the property is from Smokey Drive, which is a county-maintained local road that has 50 feet of right-of-way. And it was part of the Sugar Creek Development of Regional Impact, which was rescinded in 2023 by the Board of County Commissioners. This is the concept plan as to where the duplex units will be located or are proposed to be located on the property, which are in very close proximity to the road, along the northern portion of the property. And staff recommends approval with conditions. Again, we're not recommending approval with conditions. I apologize. I'm used to doing a full presentation. This is, we're asking that the out, that the item be continued to the June 20th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. And of course, I know there there are some residents that would like to provide public comment today.
All right. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Can I ask Denise one question?
Yeah.
Or Liam, do either one of you know how many units they could get on the property, if they were detached? In other words, in the absence of the special exception, how many single-family detached units would they be able to put on the property?
I can answer that question. They can get approximately, based on RES6, because R4 is higher density than RES6, so you're capped at the comp plan, they can potentially get 42 units. I'm not sure what the wetlands, so not not taking into wetlands into consideration.
Only based on zoning.
Purely based on the zoning, 42 units.
Okay.
How was the number arrived?
RES6, six times seven is 42.
No, 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 that, for the proposal, there's seven duplex units and one single-family. How was that number arrived at?
Perhaps Liam can answer that question.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Liam?
Liam Devine, Planning and Economic Development. That would be from RES6, so again, zoning looks at your overall. From their conceptual, showing what acreage from their property was actually wetlands, that's how that number came up. So they took the upland acreage from their conceptual.
So they couldn't actually build 42?
So that would, they would have to have a wetland delineation survey, which isn't required at this point. So when they actually get a wetland delineation survey to get the exact number of upland acreage, then they would be able to get that. So since there is a wetland on the property, they wouldn't be able to get to the total 42. Now, if they have a wetland delineation survey and all of a sudden there is no wetland on the property, their their maximum density would be 42.
I'm getting it based upon the estimated area of wetland, the allowable units is 15?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Is that, is that why one unit ended up being single-family, the rest were duplex?
Correct.
To stay at that number?
All right. Thanks, Liam.
Thank you.
Okay, so for those of you who would like to to ask questions or make a statement, please come forward, give your name and address.
What is that?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Fister. My wife, Ann, and I live at 12635 Blue Pine Circle in Hudson. I'm here today to speak about our concerns regarding the rezoning and development of project SE7768. When we first bought our home six years ago, we discovered an ecological oasis in our backyard, which abuts a wetland conservation area. Every day, we experience new wildlife adventures as we look into the conservation area behind our yard. We see a wide variety of songbirds, many stopping to visit during migratory periods. But some of the mainstays are piliated woodpeckers, a family of barred owls, and a family of barred owls. Although piliated woodpeckers are not endangered, they are not commonly seen or heard, so having them present daily is a special treat. Barred owls, however, are a protected species. There are several laws and regulations protecting barred owls and their habitats, especially in southern states, including Florida. And since barred owls' favorite meals are squirrels and mice, that helps keep the rodent population under control. We also regularly see Florida-model ducks and ducklings, which are not migratory ducks, whose protection is the responsibility of the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. Other species that are threatened and and or of special concern that inhabit this conservation area year-round or during migration are swallowtail kites, sandhill cranes, little blue herons, maria's marsh wrens, and snowy egrets. When we learned that the proposed development is either on or adjacent to the conservation wetlands that are part of the area behind our home, we became quite alarmed. When we bought our property, we were immediately informed that the conservation area behind us meant no development, period. When we added to our home, a Pasco County official had to verify that our small project would not encroach upon the wetlands behind our yard. We are determined to respect and protect our wetlands and our wildlife. Pasco County touts the phrase "open spaces and vibrant places." We trust that the county really means what it says, and that it's not just meaningless rhetoric. If this project goes forward, we will be watching to see if the county stands behind the protections of our threatened wildlife. I guarantee I'll take it personally if the woodpeckers, owls, deer, egrets, great blue herons, and other species disappear simply to line the pockets of another developer. The conservation area is there for a reason. I'm asking you to not betray our trust in you. Yes, I am concerned about bird beaks and duck bills. I suspect, however, the developer is only concerned about dollar bills. And finally, our area is zoned for single-family residences and includes considerable green space surrounding the homes. Granting this zoning variance violates the intent of the original zoning and defers only to the desires of a developer to maximize the return on his investment at the expense of the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Excuse me. Do you have any questions? It's a, it's customary that we don't clap or yell or anything like that. So, you know, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but try to hold it down. Is there any questions for the person that just spoke? No? All right, next. Who'd like to be next? Again, your name and address, please.
Vince Kiefer, 12505 Smokey Drive. I'm not, I'm right off, I'm in a cul-de-sac. And I did what he says exactly. The only thing that I have really concern about is traffic amongst everything else. Moved here for the same reasons we were kind of like told that it was just going to be single-family homes here. My only other concern is, like I said, traffic. It's already atrocious as it is. Being with an HOA, as of Monday, I resigned. One of the other issues that we've had in that in that same area on that road is that the other end was another person that you guys okayed, that the county okayed to build on there was, which is church slash daycare. To this, to this day, that was five years ago. It's atrocious. I've, I've, we, as a board, we tried to sit there and talk to this gentleman about getting it taken care of. You guys signed, or somebody signed off from the county. I don't know if it was, and he's friends with somebody from the county. He's had issues big time. I just don't want any more garbage on on our streets or in our neighborhood like that. That's my, that's my main concern, and I'm sure 100% of everybody would back me up on this. We don't need this here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Hello, everyone. My name is William Nixon, and I live on 12524 Smokey Drive. Me and my wife, we've been there probably about 12 years. You know what this gentleman said, the wildlife, it's 100% accurate what he's talking about. Same thing with Vince. One of our main concerns, we live on Smokey Drive. That street is just a small, two-lane street. It's a neighborhood street. Shadow Lakes is a deed restricting community and goes into Shadow Ridge, wherever that goes, where they want to build it. Most of the people that live in that area, they don't go out of their main thing. The reason why, there's dips in the roads, there's stop signs. They turn out of there and they head our street to go to work, wherever they're going. It's a straight shot. And the traffic is already, it's bad. It's increased tremendously over the years. And we have a lot of kids there, a lot of wildlife. They speed up and down the road and all that, so that's one of our main concerns. And it just, if you could just actually see it and be there, it just does not belong there, okay? And we have a really good community. Everybody's great, and we're just trying to keep it that way as far as it's balanced. There's just no room for that. It's just not meant to be. There's other places all over Florida, something like that would be better fit. That's about it, really.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that didn't raise their hand? Okay. All right, so when we get back together on the 20th, anybody who didn't speak today will have an opportunity to speak then and raise your concerns. The meeting will be in this room on the 20th, so we'll be right back here. Hopefully, by that time, Ms. Willhite will have had an opportunity to arrange a neighborhood meeting where you can all get face-to-face with the people that are involved on both sides and see if it can, if anything can be worked out. If not, we're going to make the ultimate decision on the 20th. So we appreciate your participation, and we appreciate you coming today and being here. And I'm sure that we'll work out some amicable solution. So anything further from the county, Denise?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
If not, do I hear a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second to continue. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, like sign. Motion carries. Okay.
June 20th?
June 20th, yeah.
June 20th, 1:30 PM, the same room.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
So, Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, Denise, were you going to cover the fact that we have a new planning commission?
I was going to, but do you want to kind of tag team on it?
Go ahead. Go ahead. You start.
All right, so on, at the last
Why don't we wait just a minute until later?
Sure, of course. Thank you.
Can we, can we ask you all to go talk out in the other room so we can hear?
Yeah, we're now going to talk about other business, not related to the site of
Can I ask you to state one thing before we?
Sure.
Thanks for letting me do it. Just so I understand, I've never been to one of these, obviously. They're going to get together with us and we're going to talk about it. Going to come back to you guys
Right.
And give them the side with you.
Right.
And we can be here, but since we've already spoken, we're not going to be allowed to speak.
You got it. Perfect.
Perfect, perfect summary.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. A troublemaker.
Somebody's got to do it.
All right.
Great. So I just wanted to let the planning commission members know that at the last board meeting, at the last board of county commissioners meeting, Commissioner Waitman appointed Matthew Muns to serve on the planning commission for his appointment to the planning commission. That, that, his appointment will begin on May 2nd, 2024, which is the next planning commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City. Many of you may know who Matthew Muns or Matt Muns is, but basically, he is, he's an engineer, so now we'll have another engineer on the planning commission.
Boy, too many engineers.
He
I'll bring my nuts, Scott. I'm feeling really lonely.
Better bring three chumps.
He actually served on the planning board for the city of Dade City, and I believe he may be resigning that that seat. And he's a PE and currently works for a company called Kennedy Jenks. And he has a, he has more than 10 years, I think at this point, probably 13 years or so, of experience with Florida-based utilities. And if that, if the name Muns is, is, sounds familiar, I had the
last day that she's going to be joining us.
Why did you not tell us so we would have, like, done a celebration?
Well, everybody- Here, have a chomp.
We have some problems.
People got our choice, green or red.
The red ones, too.
She's accepted a position with the State Attorney's Office, so unless you all get into trouble, you probably won't see her again. So, stay out of trouble so you don't-
We'll miss you, and I don't want to see you again.
I hope we don't see you again.
We scared her off from land use, too.
Maybe one day.
She'd rather deal with criminals than you all.
I can understand that.
We're harder to deal with.
So, we wish her well in our new endeavors.
Yes, good luck.
Congratulations.
Congrats. All right.
All right, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're out of here.
Waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Storm water carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Hey, Tampa Bay! Let's come together to conserve water. When it rains or rain is in the forecast, skip a week of watering and save up to 2,500 gallons of water. Once a week, watering restrictions are in effect. Know your day, Tampa Bay. Go to mywaterday.org.
Are you one of the nearly 50,000 veterans who live, work, and play in Pasco County? Our team at Pasco County Veteran Services is here to help you and your family, making sure you receive the benefits you deserve. From filing compensation and pension claims to crisis and aid and assistance, we're here to serve you.
So, all of the veteran service officers here in Pasco County are retired from the military. We all come from different backgrounds, different branches of the military, but we all bring forth the experience and our expertise just through things that we have gained from our own personal military services.
You should come in and talk to a veteran service officer if you're trying to put together any type of claim that involves the VA.
I just think the team is great here, very caring, that's for sure. And they put their all to help you. You get total attention from them when you do come in, which is awesome.
They'll provide you with the guidance. We can help you put together the paperwork, and we can also give you a status and update on your claim after it's been submitted.
So, I have had veterans that, that came in with $5 in their bank account, and once their claims get approved, now they're getting a monthly tax-free benefit of over $3,000 a month. That's huge.
Sometimes we can do it over the phone, we can do it over video, but it's, it feels more personable when you're sitting there across from someone who probably lived the same life you lived, and they, there is more, and it's more understanding to your needs and your wants.
Give them a call, find out if you can come in, have your documents with you ready to go, and they'll, they'll help you.
So, I'm hanging out in our medical department today, and we are actually preparing to do some routine surgeries, both for our kittens that are actually moving on to their forever homes. But another thing that we also do while we're here in our medical department is we do also work with several injured pets as well. We have one kitty that's here right now. She actually came in with a partially fractured jaw, and she's actually very, very happy and very sweet. But washes with us, we'll make sure she gets some really good pain medication, getting taken care of, and then when she's ready and feeling good, we'll make sure she finds her forever home. We also have several kitties that are under medical foster right now. We are actually watching from day to day. She has a little bit of a eye thing going on here, but we're watching her. She's in medical foster right now, and as we go from day to day, medical will decide if she does need to have her eye either removed or if there is more medical treatment that can be offered for her. So, we're hanging out in our treatment area, and this is where our animals are anesthetized and then go ahead and prep for their surgeries. So, like, somebody like this little sweetheart, we would go ahead and maybe working with our medical team and working with them and be having their exams done while we're here. So, not only are we doing surgeries on our kittens today, but we have several dogs that are also going under for surgery as well. One of our pups here, she had pups of her own just a few weeks ago. All of those puppies have now been adopted. She's now undergoing her surgery so that she is spayed. We don't have any more babies being born. She was a very young mama to start, but now she can worry about just finding her next home.
Microchipping, you've probably heard the term, but you might not know what it is or why it's so important. The chip has the same information as the tag on your pet's collar, but it's easily injected just under the skin. So, a quick scan of the chip and we know who they belong to. When a lost dog arrives at the shelter, a microchip implant can triple its odds of being reunited with its owner. We know how important getting lost dogs back to their owners is for our community, and we're here to help. You can schedule an appointment to visit our low-cost microchip clinic, and in just about 10 minutes, get that microchip implanted and you're good to go. Once your pet is microchipped, or if they already are, make sure to keep all of your contact information updated, like your phone number, your address, and your email address, and make sure it's updated with your veterinarian as well. Remember, one simple microchip can get your lost pet back to your home and make sure it's safe with you and your family. For more information on microchipping or microchip appointments, visit mypasco.net/pas.
Wondering why planning is so important to the health and prosperity of Pasco County? Some of these pictures represent historical sites that have been preserved. Some represent new growth that is changing our county from the present and into the future. And some represent the reality that Pasco is a diverse and cultural county significant to our state and our citizens. What are the possibilities for Pasco County? Only you, along with our planning and development team and elected officials, can decide the outcome of Pasco for years to come. Follow us on social media for ideas on how you can participate in making Pasco the perfect place to live, work, and play.
When I spoke to the officials here, they were unseen before I had arrived. They indicated that at least the winds were clocked at 60 miles an hour that it came- They indicated that at least the winds were clocked at 60 miles an hour that it came through. Some of the damage that had occurred, it ripped the roof right off the entire facility, screws and all, just ripped it out, destroyed the carports, any attachments, sheds, snapped trees. So there was substantial damage for 60 mile an hour winds. So this one here was rather close. As you could see, it removed it, it removed the entire roofing system, but left the insulation. And that's what saved the structure actually, from getting substantial damage.
They have a tarp now to secure it. The insulation, as I indicated, stayed intact, but the remainder of the roof and carport has been placed in the backyard.
And I walked out, tried to open the sunroom door and the rain was going this way. So I shut the sunroom door, stepped back a few feet and it went pop, one big boom. That was it.
We realized that the winds may pick up tomorrow, so we'll be back out here again, checking the structures again to make sure everybody's safe. But this one here, we'll keep an eye on just to make sure it's, it's safe for the occupants to be inside.
We here at Go Pasco want to return the favor by serving you. Go Pasco offers all active-duty military and veterans unlimited free rides on our fixed route buses. When you step on the bus, just show the driver one of these forms. Military ID card, DD Form 2, valid VA card, V on your driver's license, or Go Pasco Veteran ID. Go Pasco, where veterans ride free.
Finding Rover is an application that is used both on website and smartphones and you can download the app or use the website to upload photos of your own pet to help find them if they've become lost. And the way it works best with us is that when those animals are being found estranged by our animal control officers or being brought in by another member of the community, their information is automatically being uploaded to Finding Rover system, their pictures are automatically being uploaded. And if they see their pet, they already know where they can go and find it.
I think one of the interesting things about our organization is our ability to help the public. We have so many different ways that we can do that. One of the most special ways we do that is being able to reunite pets with their owners. And anytime we can get some technology, a form of technology to help us do that is incredible. And with the Finding Rover app, we personally at Pasco County Animal Services have been able to reunite pets with their owners based on facial recognition technology, which that's some space stuff right there, but we make it work and we get animals back into their homes and it's absolutely incredible, not only for the animals, but for those people as well.
The application for Finding Rover is a free application for smartphones. You can use any picture that you find on your Facebook pages, on your private pictures, anywhere that you have them. If you're using your phone, it'll open up your camera roll and you can choose the photo that you'd like to use.
Here in Florida, we're no stranger to rain and Pasco County Public Works wants to show you how we're working to improve drainage along your roads. Our crews work hard to keep your roads in great shape and you'll notice after a heavy rain, we often see ponding or standing water on the road that doesn't easily drain away. Ponding can be a problem for a couple reasons. Most importantly, it can be a safety issue because when you drive through standing water, you can start to hydroplane and lose control. So why does ponding happen? In most cases, it's because the shoulder doesn't slope away from the road, so the water doesn't have anywhere else to go. Pasco crews are always on the lookout for these problem areas and have a relatively easy way to fix them. Most Pasco roads that have water ponding problems have a sod curb where the grass grows right up next to the road. Our crews use this machine called a grater to shave off about three feet of sod running along the road. This creates a slope, allowing water to run away from the road. Our crews also use a loader to scoop debris and a sweeper to clean the work site. Then finishing touches are added, like new sod or stone to prevent the fresh soil from washing away. And just like that, ponding is gone and your roads are protected. This easy, cost-effective fix doesn't alter the rights of way or affect your property in any way. Thanks for watching and please visit mypasco.net to learn more about how Pasco is working for you.
Hello, I'm Josh Taylor from Pasco County Fire Rescue. Thank you for joining us. When medical emergencies strike, first responders will always do what it takes to access the home and reach the patient. Sometimes that means that we have to break a window or force a door as a last resort. We want to make sure that all of our options are explored before doing any damage to your home, but if forcing entry is our only option, we may have to do some damage. This video is intended to show you and your family options for allowing firefighters access to your home in times of an emergency. While this list isn't all-inclusive, it's intended to show you the most common options for emergency-